He's doing good. Yeah, he's on his way home and, actually, he's home. He's home and good luck.
All right, welcome to the February 14th Board Meeting here at Monroe Middle School. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Here. Ms. Blatter, would you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. All right, Dr. Schiller, would you like to introduce our principal and our school and have some opening comments?
Yeah, so we're pleased to be here at Monroe this evening. One huge thank you to our music students that kicked the evening off. That was such a great way to start the meeting, but Mrs. Hitteman is in her first year as principal here at Monroe, and I'd like to introduce her to welcome the host school report.
So, board members, while they're checking the mics, just remind you, everyone, just get into your mic tonight. You can't be too close to the mic, so get right into it. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the, uh, thank you for the tip. Appreciate that. Well, hello, hi, welcome to Monroe. I'm Ashley Hitteman, and I'm honored to have you here with us tonight, and I hope you feel the Monroe love this Valentine's evening. I'd like to begin with a couple of notes of appreciation. First, for our Monroe musicians that you just had an opportunity to hear from our jazz band and also from our chamber orchestra. I hope that you enjoyed the musical talents of our Eagle musicians as you entered the building, and I also wanted to say thank you to our teachers, Jeff Novak and Kelsey Dewar. One of the unique and special pieces of Monroe is the percentage of students who participate in our music and performing arts programming. Well over half of our 710 students are actively involved in band, choir, orchestra, and drama. And so the success of our performing arts programming at Monroe is due in large part to our incredible staff and the passion that they bring to the programs and for the arts. So, thank you also to our PTA who have provided snacks and baked goods and refreshments this evening. I hope you enjoy that. We appreciate all they do for our students and staff at Monroe. So, I spent some time brainstorming the many highlights and special qualities that come to mind when I think about all that we are doing and the work we're doing at Monroe, and I didn't have to take too long in that brainstorm, though, because one of the programs that I am most proud of and eager to share with you is the success of our Essentials program. And so, I know at the last board meeting, hopefully my sound is okay, I know at the last board meeting Erica Ekstrom spent some time sharing an overview of the District 200 Continuum of Services that we provide within our special education programming, and so I'm thrilled to provide you some context in terms of what that means for Monroe and how we serve students specifically in our Essentials program. So, our Essentials program services students with moderate to significant disabilities. We provide instruction for students with a wide range of differing abilities. In addition to teaching standards that are guided by the Illinois Essential Elements, we also organize our curriculum around four community living domains. As you see on the screen, domestic, community, vocational, and recreation. We provide wraparound services and supports for students to meet their unique needs. So, Monroe has four Essentials classrooms, and we host the North Side program for our district. We collaborate with our South Side colleagues at Hubble to ensure program alignment. And so, the picture that you see on your screen was one of our many highlights of the year. We hosted a Halloween party for students, and so we had an afternoon where it was just a joy to watch the students come together and to engage in activities together and have a meal together at one big, long table. So, the magic behind the program is the team that you see on your screen now. It takes a village for our Essential program to function at a high level, and I am so proud of the team, our dream team here at Monroe, and many members of this team are here tonight. Would you please stand? I mean it sincerely. Our team is truly high-functioning, effective, and just such a professional group. Our Essentials team works with our most vulnerable students, and they have a collective heart of gold. They serve as student advocates. They are consistently going above and beyond to provide the best possible education and care for our students. Thank you for being here. Okay, so at the start of the school year, Monroe as a whole school prioritized serviced with intention and purpose, and as an Essentials team, our big three areas of focus include alignment, integration of skills, and post-secondary planning. Our team has spent a considerable amount of time during Institute Days, planning sessions, to align curriculum to state standards. We also have prioritized integration of skills, that students are practicing skill development at multiple areas, different times, across multiple different settings. And so, as with all of our students, we have our eye on post-secondary success and career readiness. So, we include pre-vocational experiences within our programming and align our work to the career pathways in an effort to pique student interest and develop their passions even at this age. There are more pictures than anything within this presentation, because I know that's probably what you want to see, and I will fill you in on the details as we go through, but it's so important to us that you see our students and you see what their day-to-day really looks like here at Monroe. So, this slide is really intended for that purpose, to give you a glimpse of a typical day in the life of an Essential student. So, program components include a variety of academic and functional life skills. So, the magic of the Essentials program is the integrated experience that allows for flexibility in terms of the structure and pace of the day. So, students do engage in math and social science and reading. They also engage in vocational training and including varied work tasks. And then, again, they are practicing those career readiness skills. So, we focus on generalization of skills. That's probably something you'll hear me say multiple times at multiple points in a student's day across multiple settings. So, daily and weekly repetition and frequency of skill building really depends on a student's IEP, and it depends on their level of functioning as well, as they are individualized. So, on the screen, you can see students engaging in different individual and group activities, including communication through an assistive device and practicing developmental and culinary skills. So, as I mentioned before, it takes a village to provide individualized supports for students in our Essentials program, and our students receive a number of related services, and many of those appear on this slide. So, in the pictures, you'll see students receiving physical therapy, engaged in speech and language groups, receiving a lesson from our social worker regarding our Circles curriculum, and also working with their peer buddy. So, again, all of our related services align with what students are learning in the classroom setting, and so we are constantly and consistently reteaching and reinforcing these skills, which helps generalize across multiple settings. And so, it's a team approach always, as you can see by the whole team that showed up tonight. Okay. I love these pictures. They're fantastic. So, our students also have an opportunity to go on community trips, which I would like to mention are not field trips, or not the field trips that you probably have experienced growing up or experienced in the past. So, rather, they are community-based instruction, truly. These trips in our community are not only to familiarize students with the community in which they live and one day may work, but also to, and also they'll contribute to their community in the future, but we're also developing social skills, how to navigate in multiple settings, how to consider budgeting and purchasing and interacting with those in the community. So, students are generalizing math and reading and social skills in multiple settings on this slide. Okay, so one of the best parts of Monroe that I noticed immediately when I became principal here just this school year was our inclusive community. So, we pride ourselves on the diversity at Monroe in multiple forms. Within our Essentials program, students are connected with peer buddies, which you see on the screen, pictured in a training just today with best practices and strategies to use with their peer buddy, but students are also connected in clubs and activities. And so, student connectedness is a goal in District 200 at all buildings and also at Monroe, where we're talking about how we can get students connected throughout their school day and also in after-school clubs and activities. So, I am happy to report that we have so much engagement in our Eagle Squad Club that we actually had to add an additional sponsor to the club because we had so much student engagement, and that was just most recently within the last couple of weeks. We're so excited about that. So, we prioritize inclusion in our elective courses as well and throughout the school day. And you can see on this slide presentations and art that our students were making, so that's one of their elective courses that they take, where they access the general setting, and also, we have students within our performance seminar class that take a field trip over to Jefferson Early Childhood Center, and we walk down the street and have performances for the students there, which is such a fun way for students to realize they are a part of a larger community and they are connected from building to building. Most recently, we have rebranded our formerly known as Monroe Makers to Essential Goods. So, students are now creating cards and gifts using cricket technology and have set up a pop-up shop for students and staff, and may I tell you, it's already a hit. They are doing big business over here. So, the benefits of this business are plenty, and you can see them on your screen. So, students are actively practicing job-related skills, product creation, development, marketing, sales, you name it, and so they are really preparing for the future and getting excited about the things that they are creating and what they are making in Essential Goods. So, we see that program. I'm really excited to see it back rebranded and also being so successful with our students. We had a line. You can see one of the pictures below. We had quite the line, and they were very excited with the receipt of all the purchases that were made, and that was just during one lunch period for that particular photo. So, my hope is that this gives you a glimpse into the daily life of Monroe in our Essentials program and really what we're focused on. We are working hard to provide an environment that is one of exceptional service and care for our young students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right. Public comment. So, thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school, district, and community. It is the board's practice not to directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and information explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comment. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kolevitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts, and then, at the end of our agreed time, I'll respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time tonight to attend the board meeting and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district. So, we have five comments tonight. Our first speaker is Tammy Kroll.
How do I love thee, District 200? A poem adapted from Elizabeth Barrett Browning's Sonnet 43. How do I love thee, District 200? Let me count the ways. I love thee for giving my oldest daughter a love of reading and writing fostered by Mrs. Klein at Edison Middle School. I love thee for giving my son perseverance and grit fostered by his years under Coach Howe's patience and guidance, also at Edison. I love thee for currently giving my youngest daughter confidence to perform in Wheaton-Warnville South Show Choirs and on the golf team, and I love thee for hiring me, Tammy Kroll, to teach speech and drama here at Monroe four years ago. I am honored to speak to you tonight as a proud union member, parent, and teacher in this district, and I could not have chosen a more appropriate time than Valentine's Day to tell you why I love this district and Monroe. Thank you, board members, for loving our students and families enough to serve on the Board of Education. If you will open your Valentine bag in front of you and take out your Valentines, I will share with you why I love teaching at Monroe and in this district. For your red heart, how do I love thee, Monroe colleagues? Let me count the ways. My colleagues are willing to collaborate and co-teach lessons which make the arts accessible and relevant to our students. Mrs. Hazard, one of our reading specialists, presents with me to our drama students to help them see the relationship between good reading strategies and understanding a character from a script to be able to perform as that character. Mr. Bertrand, our music director, collaborates with me for our fall musicals, winter play, sixth grade quarterly plays, and our exploration classes to include all levels of students at Monroe in these performances. This is only two examples of the kind of teamwork that happens each day here, and I am continually impressed with my colleagues' willingness to help judge projects, share ideas, and pull together to do what is best for our students. For your orange heart, how do I love thee, Monroe middle schoolers? Yes, I teach middle school on purpose. I have included for you some current middle school lingo. Please note, adults should not try to talk in this language. It is theirs, and you will sound ridiculous, but I hope this will help you understand our middle schoolers should you have the pleasure to spend time with them. For your yellow heart, how do I love thee, District 200 community? As Mrs. Hitteman told you, two of our drama classes visit our friends at Jefferson Early Childhood Center once a quarter to perform preschool puppet shows and stories which align with their curriculum. Many of our Monroe students are graduates of Jefferson, so their former teachers see them perform.
Ms. Kroll, can we get the green and blue really quick?
Do you want me to read the which one?
Just get the green. We passed it for three minutes, so if we could just get the green and blue really quick. I really appreciate it, though.
No, it's okay. And praise them for their maturity and efforts. For your green heart, I love thee, Wheaton-Warnville community. You'll see the green heart is from the community, which represents our Wheaton Park District involvement in our speech program, helping our students prepare for their first interviews, and for your blue heart, I love thee, Monroe in District 200, with the breath, smiles, and tears of all my years here, and I look forward to many more years as a Monroe Eagle. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Our second public comment is from Amy Erkinswick.
Good evening, everyone. In light of some recent events, I wanted to just highlight a couple of board policies. 5.125 Personal Technology and Social Media Usage and Conduct and 5.120 Employee Ethics Code of Professional Conduct. These policies outline, in summary, that the use of personal social media by district employees should be reserved for duty-free time. Access to district networks should be used expressly for educational purposes, and employees should not possess images of students, among other directives. I and many community members feel very strongly that for a teacher to record during school day and post TikToks featuring students set to vulgar music depicting acts of violence and submission is disturbing on many levels. Worth consideration in relation to this issue is the district's goal for students to identify a trusted adult within their school buildings. I would urge the district to, in the interest of the safety and security and mental health of our students, instead ensure that every adult in each of our school buildings is a trustworthy adult. Additionally, I'm frustrated by the inconsistency in district leadership's responses to this matter and others. The disparity in the communications that the board and administration offer to community members is significant. This is a very connected community. As you know, we talk, and I don't personally believe it's reasonable or respectful that one individual be given a canned, repeat response, offering no pertinent information or actual discourse, while another community member be sent a thoughtful message with relevant attachments. The lack of effective two-way communication breeds mistrust, and I believe that there is a significant opportunity for improvement in this area. Additionally, on a brighter and more positive note, I just, as a parent who engaged in the principal interview process for Emerson, want to just say, welcome to Mrs. De La Rosa. We're really super excited to have you. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is Mary Ann Vito.
I am speaking tonight regarding Illinois School Code 10-27.31C that the district is not in compliance with, that states, in addition to public comments at board meetings in compliance with OMA, the statute states that at each regular meeting and special meeting, which is open to the public, the public and employees of any of the districts which are party to the joint agreement shall be the joint agreement shall be afforded reasonable time to comment to or, and this is the operative word, ask questions of board members. This is not being done at board meetings presently. Kirk Allen started to explain this at the December board meeting before he was cut off by Mr. Hanlon, the three-minute rule, even though there were only two speakers that night. The intent of this legislature was to ensure open dialogue and transparency at meetings. I have been commenting to the school board for many years, as well as emailing the board, and have been underwhelmed and dismayed at the lack of response from board members. In fact, there has been no response. Rather, a sense of arrogance. What do we need elected officials for if you choose to ignore your constituents? This lack of engagement, lack of listening to, lack of taking advice from constituents who have researched and presented you with facts and data through FOIA, has resulted in declining test scores, particularly in math, reading, writing, overall student performance, sexualizing students with pornographic books, adult topics in health classes, schools and teachers leaving parents out and marginalizing parents out of the loop with issues that affect their children, more and more political ideology being taught to our children, et cetera. The things I mention affect all of us as a society, and the degradation which we are witnessing compels me to call attention to this. We need elected leaders to stand up to and have the courage and morality to question the district, question our legislators in Springfield, to push back against legislation that is harming our children, to represent the people footing the bill, the parents, hold staff accountable for our students. All of you work for the people, not the other way around. I am presenting the statute to the board, calling your attention to the noncompliance with it. I request that you start acting like elected officials to represent the people instead of rubber stampers for an agenda that is not improving student performance but is declining.
Thank you, Ms. Vitone. Our next speaker is Jan Shaw.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been to one of these events. I used to come quite regularly. My first one was back in the 90s. There was no time limit on public comment, and they'd even take a break partway through the board meeting for cookies and coffee if you needed to run to the bathroom. And the board members would actually come out and talk to the public that was here. Very rarely were there many people, but they would talk to us. Okay, I know that we're going to have a referendum, I hope, as opposed to you just decided to take the cash. We have bonds that are supposed to be paid off, I believe, in the year 2025. That's coming up real soon. And since our tax bill is a combination of whatever we had from last year plus inflation for the operating costs, plus whatever it takes to pay off the bond principal and interest, when those bonds are paid off, our taxes are scheduled to go down. I was a recipient of a phone survey on which they sold us, if we do all of this for the middle school year, taxes are going to go down this little bit. And if we do this much for the middle schools, we're going to go down this a bit. Why do they go down if you spend nothing? What do the schools really need? If you want to do any additions, any modifications to the school, the public has a right to know what you're doing and what we're paying for. More importantly, the building doesn't make the educational experience. The educational experience depends upon the quality of the teachers, the curriculum, and to a great degree whether the parents and families send their kids to school ready to learn. This district has always been a fantastic district, but we've got problems now. I'm sure COVID and the shutdown for the short period was part of that. I don't get it. There's been changes to curriculum, and the kids seem to be getting dumber. We've become very dependent upon, oh, it's sitting there, our cell phones, right? Nobody knows the phone number anymore because you just dial it by name. Nobody knows how to add or subtract because we pull out our calculators. What happened to some basic learning to use the thing between your ears, your brain? Anyway, as far as transparency goes, which is what I wrote down there, I'd like to know what's going on in terms of how much money can we expect to get off when the bonds are all retired? When will we actually expect to see that on our tax bill? What are you planning to do for the middle schools? Okay? And why hasn't some of this stuff already been done? Because I know that all the buildings are getting something every, there's a rotating thing through the summer. Somebody needs a roof. Somebody needs a parking lot. Somebody needs a, you know, whatever. Anyway, thank you for your attention. I hope I didn't go over my three minutes because I'm not watching the clock.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Our last speaker tonight is Jennifer Castillo.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Castillo. I've lived in the district for over 12 years. My only child is a student here at Monroe. First, I want to thank our board. I know you served voluntarily and put in an immense amount of work and time. Thank you for your accessibility, for all the opportunities you provide us as a community to get to know you and reach out to you and share our opinions. My son just returned to school after a few weeks of medical leave. It means so much to us as parents to know that he is safe and seen and supported at school. Everyone in this building, from the principal and the assistant principal, to the health office, to all of his teachers, to his fellow students, support him and surround him in a way that makes us know that he is safe and is going to continue to flourish here. That means everything to us, knowing that he is in school in a district where he is supported and is safe, and everyone from the board down to his peers are focused on the students. Every administrator, every student, our educators work so hard, and we are so blessed to have professional educators in this district who work hard for our students and put in so much time and care beyond what they're required to be there for our students. I especially want to point out, as a drama and an orchestra parent, how much those programs mean to our students. Thank you for being here in Monroe. In one of our performing arts spaces, I can't say enough about Ms. Kroll and Mr. Bertrand, Ms. Shealy, Mrs. Dewar, my son's orchestra teachers. Performing arts, arts are essential. They are an essential part of our kids' education. I encourage you, as you look at building facilities plans, to dedicate resources to those spaces, particularly here at Monroe. Physical spaces in an educational setting are essential to effective academics. They do impact the outcome of our students' learning. Performing arts are not an extra. My son, through drama and through music, has grown socially and emotionally. He has made more connections with his peers. He has learned skills that help him academically. I really want to encourage you to put resources into those spaces. And like I said again, I just want to say, I am so grateful to be in a community that values our students and values our kids. And thank you to everyone in this district for putting our kids first.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. All right, it's time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler, any topics you'd like to update us on?
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. A couple of things that I wanted to share with the board and community tonight under my report. Number one, a huge thank you to Monroe for hosting us tonight. Thank you to the Essentials Program for sharing with us what is special. I've had an opportunity with Mrs. Hitteman to visit a couple of times this year, and so thankful for the work that you're doing. And I do want to just call out in the feedback from the community, especially around some of the facilities work that we've been doing. The community has placed a value on spaces that support essentials and our most vulnerable students. So I'm thankful to the community for that, and I think tonight's presentation did an amazing job of highlighting the work that you're doing. So thank you. We have a couple of special administrative welcomes tonight under the personnel report. The board will be approving two new administrators to the district. I know we have a very special group of teachers to my back left of the room from Emerson Elementary School. I see the hands up in the air. Thank you for that. I want to introduce Mrs. Katie De La Rosa, who will be the principal at Emerson Elementary School next year. Katie's a stranger to District 200. Most recently, she's been at Bauer where she served as an assistant principal, and we're excited to welcome her to Emerson next year. Huge thanks and appreciation for staff, community members, our administrative team for a very, very thoughtful, thorough interview process to get us to the decision for Katie, and welcome. Also want to welcome Mr. Joe Drover. I can't see Joe where he are. Oh, there you are. Thanks, Joe. Joe, this evening will be appointed as assistant principal at Wheaton North. So he's taken a position from Mr. Venkis, who's retiring. So just like Mrs. De La Rosa, he's been at Wheaton North for, I think, most of his career, other than a brief stint elsewhere. And we're excited to see Joe. Joe's been in a number of different leadership roles inside of the building, kind of on the teacher's side, and we are excited to welcome him to the administrative team. Huge thanks to Mr. Cornthoyer, Mr. Biskin for leading that process, and again, all of the teacher's staff and parents that engaged in that process. So welcome to both of our administrators. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention. Actually, a little bit earlier this week on Monday, I had an opportunity to meet with PTA Council. Rob and Julie joined to share a little bit about board role. And one of the things that I actually shared with PTA Council that I wanted to mention this evening is, last year, at the end of the year, I had an opportunity to share with the board and the community some feedback that actually came from a really significant research study coming out of the pandemic conducted by both Harvard, Stanford. And they evaluated learning results coming out of the pandemic. And important to highlight, I think for everybody that's in the room right now, that District 200's learning results coming out of the pandemic far exceeded those of other school districts around the state. And they updated that study in the last year to actually show that not only did we outperform students from around the state on a national level, our results, especially in the area of English Language Arts, were through the roof last year. So huge testament to the continued work. We have not only recovered any potential learning challenges in the pandemic, we have far surpassed the learning results going into it. So that is a testament to everybody in the district that works hard to make that happen. A test result is one indicator of learning we recognize, but yet that is an important one. So thank you for that. Wanted to mention that the Five Essentials Survey, Annual State Culture Climate Survey, is open. So I encourage all parents to consider participating in Five Essentials. That survey is also completed by staff and students, grades four and up in the district, to give us important information about how well-positioned our schools are to improve learning. And so we certainly hope, look forward to everybody participating in that. And then finally, just wanted to mention that we will be releasing the application for Citizens Advisory Committee in the next couple of weeks. I know we will have at least five seats open on CAC, as we have five members that will be rolling off after spending five years on the committee. The three attendance areas that we've highlighted, we are prioritizing sharing with the committee tomorrow, actually are Emerson, Lincoln, and Johnson. We will only have one returning member from each of those schools, so really are hoping to work hard. I mentioned that as well with our PTA Council and our PTA groups to help us support getting that word out. But just a reminder, once that goes out, all CAC applications are due back by spring break is the date that we set. That committee has been full the last couple of years. It's been a great source of input, I know for the board, certainly for me and for our team, and so look forward to that happening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our two student ambassadors, our two of our, not our two student ambassadors, but two of our student ambassadors to give us a report from each of the high schools. So Kaylee, looks like you're going to go first from South.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. Super excited to be back here today. We have some great things going on at Wheaton South. Most importantly, we have a ton of teams going to state. So when we talk about our extracurriculars, we are very serious about them at Wheaton South. Specifically, our speech team is going this weekend. Girls' basketball just won regionals, so we'll be heading to state there. Our women's gymnastics team is going to be heading to state. Our boys' swimming is heading to sectionals, and our boys' basketball team is currently playing right now in regionals. So excited to hear the results of that. I'd like to draw attention to the Barbie Fashion Show that will be happening at Wheaton South here in two weeks. I'm very excited. I have tons of friends in it, and most importantly, it's for an excellent charity. And I think it really shows the power of how much a community can do to raise money and be actively involved in helping our society. So Cal Angels Charity is a childhood cancer charity that funds research, as well as some of the families who are struggling through it. And so I'm very excited to be announcing the fact that our fashion class is hosting this. Spring break is six weeks away. I may or may not have that marked on my calendar. And to end out tonight, I'd like to draw attention to two of our educational programs that have just been flourishing lately. First off, our physical education program for the seniors provides us with many comprehensive gym classes, such as yoga, rock climbing, or bowling. All are super fun and a great way to get out of school and go learn physical activity that goes beyond just running on a treadmill. And so a lot of students look forward to those classes every day, and our teachers specifically really excel in these programs and make it fun. And then we also have our business incubator class, which started a few years ago by Mrs. Phelan. Mrs. Phelan, I had her personally, is one of the best teachers I will ever have in my career. She's part of the reason why I'm going into business. She runs this excellent program through our school where we learn how to make a business, interact with community members that have businesses, and they just went through their first round of pitches, and it went pretty well. So we have a ton going on at South, and we're excited to say that we're back into the swing of things. Thank you.
Thanks, Kaylee. Ethan?
Before I get into what's going on at Wheaton North, I just want to mention, I actually went to Monroe, and I was a member of the band here. So performing arts are a real big deal here at Monroe, and I'm proud to call myself an Eagle. I'm actually just going to... All right, so there's so much going on at Wheaton North. Similar to what Kaylee had mentioned, we have a lot of people going to state. So I'm going to do my best here. If I forget someone, I'm sorry. But so our boys' basketball team actually just recently won a cross-town classic against South, so I had to mention that first. They're also in a game right now as we speak. The girls' basketball team is headed to their regional game against St. Charles. A week and a half ago, Cheer went to state. They played 14 out of 75. Dance competed at Nationals in Orlando, Florida, so that's pretty exciting. Probably a little bit warmer down there. And then, like Kaylee mentioned, we have our co-op gymnastics team that's traveling down to state, some members from our speech team, boys' wrestling members, chess team. There's a whole lot going on. And then last weekend, our Model UN traveled to Chicago for a national conference. Flight, our show choir swept their first competition of the season. They got first runner-up last weekend. And then this Saturday, they're headed to Indiana to compete in their third competition. Winter Guard has placed first at two of their last three competitions, and then will compete again this weekend at Schaumburg. Like I said, there's so much going on, so I probably missed a few things, but that's what I've gotten so far for today.
Thank you, Ethan. Thank you for those updates. Appreciate it, Mr. Hanlon.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Schuler. And thank you for the updates, student ambassadors. That's really great to hear. All right, we're going to go through the consent agenda now. The items included in the consent agenda tonight are: acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School girls' softball program; acceptance of gift to Wheaton Warrenville South High School activities and athletics; approval of ROE building permits for 2024 summer architectural capital projects; approval of professional learning expenditure requests for board members; approval to open previously closed minutes; approval of 2023-2024 Student Discipline Improvement Plan; approval of bills payable and payroll; approval of minutes January 10, 2024, regular meeting open; January 24, 2024, Committee of the Whole open; and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to September 2022 as allowable by law; approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are there any items you members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No additional information.
Board, any questions or comments? All right. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Lager?
Yes.
Ms. Kullivitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes. All right, our policy posting consent agenda. There are two revised policies on the posting agenda for public review and comment, including Policy 6.230 and 7.270. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the policy posting consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
These are the last two policies from the last edition of press. When the policy committee first went through them, they had some additional questions on these two policies that we went back and did a little bit of additional research, both from press and just understanding the background, but reviewed them at the last HR policy committee and are bringing them forward to you this evening for posting.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? So, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kullivitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
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 Yes. So, tonight, there are no items, action items, on our agenda. So, we're going to move to oral reports. And we have one oral report tonight. Vision 2026 Department of Innovation and Technology Work Plan Update. Dr. Schuler?
Yep. So, Mr. Spencer's making his way up to the podium. Annually, about this time of the year, Mr. Spencer provides an update for you from the Department of Innovation and Technology. And so, just a reminder, two sides to that department. Certainly, there's the instructional side and how technology supports, guides, drives learning. And then also, the, what we call affectionately, the box and wires part of technology that not only makes sure that the stuff works, but keeps everybody safe in that space. So, Mr. Spencer's going to give you that update this evening. We've got a special little insert coming from a couple of our student ambassadors on one part of this presentation that we're going to bring some feedback from. So, Mr. Spencer, go ahead.
Good evening, Board and community. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, this is my annual update on all things innovation and technology. And let's get started with the educational side of the department. And on the work plan, some of the areas that my department is particularly involved in, first comes in the part of the work plan that talks about developing resources that are aligned with Portrait of a Graduate, and some of the strategies that are used to support Portrait of a Graduate. And that ongoing work is first to identify digital tools that are aligned with each descriptor. So, if we remember back with Portrait of a Graduate, we have all of the characteristics that are going to lead to academically successful students. So, how are we doing that here in District 200, especially this year? So, as part of the Department of Innovation and Technology, we do have two district-level innovation and technology coordinators. And each high school also has an embedded technology coach. So, those roles are very instrumental and have done a lot of work leading cohorts to actively merge Portrait of a Graduate skills in working with teachers on modern ways those skills can be practiced in the classroom. I think this is important to note for this particular role, because it really moves those skills past a piece of paper to actual implementation of how we're actually practicing these skills with students. Second, we do have a comprehensive platform called Learn Platform with all of the recommended tools that are purchased with district funds. And there has been work put into how can we connect the tools that we are spending money on as a district, or even at the building level, to support those Portrait of a Graduate skills. And we know that if we are going to commit time and money to a particular tool, that it's really important that the staff here in District 200 has sufficient professional development in learning how to use that tool effectively to support our Portrait of a Graduate work. Probably the biggest area that we have been working on since the pandemic, where we went formally one-to-one, is how can we use the fact of being one-to-one to create opportunities for students to increase their exposure to each of the descriptors in our Portrait of a Graduate work. And so, one of the strategies that we identified this year, really in the area of resiliency and problem-solving, is how can we provide students with digital citizenship opportunities? As I went around to each building during our Sharper Focus, I iterated to each level that, coming out of the pandemic, we heard some feedback, both from staff and community, that there was an increase in what we'll call distracted learners, right? Students obviously have multiple screens in front of them in their lives. Not just the Chromebooks that we give them, but many of them have gaming devices, cell phones, tablets, so on and so forth. And there's just a lot of distraction that comes with added screens. So, we've really tried to work on ways to get students to understand that when they're in school, while there's screens, and while those screens do provide useful parts of lessons, it is important to become school-ready and use those devices responsibly. One of the levels that we've put particular work in is at our elementary level. And one of our innovation and technology coaches, Caitlin Kohn, actually sat with a group of administrators at the elementary level, and with some feedback from teachers, actually made mini lessons that addressed some of the key behaviors that we heard from staff members of distracted learners. And then, hopefully, with those lessons, giving teachers a resource and a tool to go ahead and help correct some of that behavior. Probably, out of all of the educational work that we've done on that side of the house, artificial intelligence probably took up the most time and resources this year. Also, as part of my communications that have gone out to our staff, and as part of our presentation with Sharper Focus at each building, I have said, and this is not hyperbole when I say this, I think artificial intelligence is one of the biggest disruptors to education we will see in this lifetime. It is that big of a disruptor, and I say disruptor in a good sense, that it is changing very rapidly. Usually, when a disruption comes to education, we've got time to ride the wave, prepare for it, we know it's coming. This came on the scene very, very quickly. And week by week, month by month, it's already changing into something else. It's very difficult to stay in front of this particular technology. But this particular technology is actually very, very useful, once you understand how it works, and some of the ways in which we can hopefully harness it proactively for education. So, I'm going to spend a little bit of time explaining what the work that we've done in the AI space is, especially on the staff side. And then, I will, as we close out this AI portion of the presentation, turn it over to our student ambassadors to give some feedback on how they feel about AI and what role it plays in their school careers. So, anytime that we talk and mention AI in District 200, I really always start with the ethics and guidelines around how we should orient ourselves around its proper use. So, some of the things in ethics and guidelines that I really want to drive home for the board tonight is that, first and foremost, AI is a supplement, not a replacement for teacher-created work or district-adopted curriculum. While AI can take a lot of the load off a teacher's plate, there is no replacement for the expertise and the knowledge that a teacher has. So, it is a tool, not a replacement. Also, AI isn't perfect. It has bias. And believe it or not, there is a term that they use in AI descriptions, "it hallucinates", meaning that it will make things up wholesale. And I'll get to that in a little bit, and give you some more detail about that particular point. One thing that we also have to keep in mind with AI is that data security matters greatly in the world of AI. AI only gets smarter when you put data to make it smarter. So, we have to be very, very careful with both the tools that we put in front of staff and the tools that we may one day open up to students. We do not want to give any particular tool or model information that legally we're not allowed to give to anyone, right? So, that's really important. It is very, very enticing to see what AI can do and what can it create. But we have to make sure we use it responsibly with the data that we give it. I've also mentioned that it's evolving rapidly. Like I said, week to week, month to month, there is a new tool of the week. It can start doing things that it couldn't do the month before. And I guarantee, by the end of the school year, it'll change pretty rapidly. And this presentation itself might be already out of date. That's how quickly it moves. So, related to that, there has to be a concerted effort at each level to commit ourselves to digital literacy work. When AI produces something, again, it has bias, it has hallucinations. So, we have to teach students the digital literacy skills to still think critically and realize that whatever a piece of AI spits out, that it's accurate and that it's free of bias and hallucinations. Lastly, and probably practically a concern, is while this is an extremely useful tool, when used the right way, it's probably going to require significant financial dollars. Right now, there's many tools out there for free. But the reason why they're free is because they need free data. They want people to use these tools so that you can train them for free. And then, once you sufficiently train them, they quickly go behind a paywall. And they're not cheap. And the reason why they're not cheap is it actually costs a lot of money to run an AI tool. There's just a lot of computing power that these tools require, that on the backend, the equipment that is used to create these AI models also require. So, if we ever find ourselves in a space where we identify a very useful tool, either for staff or students, we're probably going to also have to have in the back of our mind, how are we going to afford or commit dollars to that if we ever do? So, I just wanted to point out some examples of AI tools that staff are using. And this is probably a little bit easier if you look at the actual handout that's printed in your green folders. There are two tools I, in particular, want to point out that have been a great boon to staff here at District 200. One is called Magic AI. And you'll notice here, there is basically a button for everything. A teacher needs help, you know, writing a letter of recommendation. A teacher needs help thinking of a collaborative activity for students. A teacher needs help drafting an email, so on and so forth. There are choices upon choices upon choices in this tool. And again, it's not a replacement for a teacher's expertise, but this tool now has helped teachers get the ball rolling and helped them with some of the more administrative-type tasks that they do, and saves them a ton of time. And there's a rule of thumb that's come out of the AI space, and that's the 80/20 rule. And the 80/20 rule is that AI will give you about 80% about what you're looking for. If you ask AI, "Hey, write me something about XYZ," 80% of that is probably pretty good. But where the real magic happens, and where the expertise is seen, is that 20% that staff put in of their own. So, again, AI kind of just gets the ball rolling, and then staff can then go in there, edit, and make it their own, so that it really comes from a place of personalization, and it doesn't sound like a robot wrote something. What's been a huge other tool in the AI space is a tool called Diffit. And what Diffit really does is differentiates and levels any type of resource that you want for different reading levels and for different depth of knowledge levels. So, one of the hardest things for a teacher to do in a lesson is to differentiate for a wide range of ability levels and needs that a teacher sees in the classroom at a given time. Diffit takes a resource, a piece of writing, a website, a video, all different kinds of things, and levels it and gives different depth of knowledge supports to support any number of abilities and needs in the classroom. And then, what it also does really well is you can take those results and create activities, very engaging, thoughtful, visual activities for students to engage themselves in. All right. A little bit of context, as I play this video here, about exciting possibilities in the world of AI. So, as we look at ways that AI can really harness some of the usefulness is in the area of translation. So, it is very hard sometimes to find interpreters, translators in any number of languages, and they're costly, right? It's very costly to hire a translator or to have some sort of interpreter service. So, as a little bit of context for the video that I'm going to play for you here in a minute, I recorded this video in English, but what it's going to play is in Spanish. And I want you to realize the power of AI, that not only did it translate what I said into Spanish, but it cloned my voice. So, it still sounds like my voice. It's not a dubbed-over version of somebody else's voice. And it also tracked my lip movements. It's in Spanish. It actually looks like I'm speaking Spanish. So, it doesn't have that, like, weird, you know, lip movement where the words don't match what the mouth So, you get the idea there. And I can send the link out if you actually want to hear it a little louder. But think about, while this does cost money, and it's not cheap, but think about when this technology starts to get more and more ubiquitous and able for people to use, that now, you can record a video in English, and if you had multiple languages spoken in your district, you can now create a video that speaks whatever the home language is for a family, right? And you're conceivably, even though this costs money, it's probably still cheaper than hiring an interpreter or translator for multiple languages that you might. So, again, exciting possibilities in that space. Some other exciting possibilities and things that we've seen in the AI space here with our staff. Both of these are middle-school examples. So, one, we have more supports for ML students. And this particular teacher has said, "I have been using Diffit to make material for my ML students. I make an English and Spanish version of the material for them. And this way, I can present the same material that is in the textbook that I do not have translations for." So, there are a number of resources and materials that staff wish to use with their students, you know, say, an article, part of a book, text, that only is provided for them in English. Now, they can use Diffit to translate that in any number of different languages. But again, Diffit also then levels that particular resource for any added needs that students might have. And then, we also have an example here from the student service space. And a part of AI that we haven't touched on too much is generative AI, in that we now can write natural language text. So, we can write any type of sentence that your mind can think of, and we can ask AI to generate a visual of that particular picture. And what makes it so mind-blowing is, it's not like going to Google, searching, you know, images and trying to find something that kind of is what you're talking about. No, it will create exactly what you're talking about. So, here's an example of how this particular staff member is supporting their... So here's an example of how this particular staff member is supporting their students. So it says, when possible, I prefer to use photo visuals as opposed to illustrations, as I find, find them to be more concrete as well as more age appropriate for engaging middle schoolers. So this particular speech and language pathologist actually comes up with whatever prompts that they're trying to teach a particular student. And then they don't have to, again, they don't have to search Google Images for just the right photo. They can create those resources to support that student just by typing in those natural language prompts. So for all the exciting use, there are some cautions around AI. And I remember I said that there are biases and there are hallucinations. In fact, ChatGPT, this isn't that old, has a disclaimer on the bottom that says, ChatGPT can make mistakes. Consider checking important information. Because AI is meant to be convincing, not always accurate. So when AI doesn't know the answer to something, it will flat out make it up because it knows it has to produce something for you. So I would argue this is not going to make students or staff dumber, but it's going to reiterate that our critical thinking skills that we have as part of a portrait of a graduate are more important than ever. When AI produces something for us, we have to teach our students and our staff that their critical thinking skills still come first. And you can see just how important those critical thinking skills are even in the visual image space as well. So on the left there, do you, are board members recognize who that might be? Is it Jack or is it Jim? Is it a combination of both? It is a combination of both, right? Those are called the deep fake. So now AI can make convincing photos of real people that actually never existed before. This could be a caution because you can imagine that if AI can create a real person that looks like a real photo and that photo never happened before, you can imagine what certain things that might be used for, right? So again, critical thinking skills are more important than ever. As I send the link out on the right there, each of those pictures that you see of those four individuals, you might be wondering, who are these people? Well, I don't know who the people are either. AI created them out of whole cloth. These people do not exist anywhere in the world. So AI is getting so good that it can also just create people that don't even, that don't even exist on the planet, right? And so again, words of caution, but to reiterate, our portrait of a graduate still matters and that critical thinking skills are very, very important to this work. I've also been very explicit with staff. Cheating, right, has been top of mind. You know, worried that students would go to AI to write papers or any other piece of text. And what has happened is there's been any number of businesses and tools that claim that they can detect when AI, you know, text has been, is being submitted. So there's, there's this whole niche industry now on trying to detect AI-generated text and stopping the cheating epidemic. I'd argue that there is no cheating epidemic, but more importantly, what I've told staff, it's very, very, be very, very careful using any of these tools that are supposed to identify AI-generated text. There has actually been studies that AI can actually show bias towards our ML students. Because as an ML student learns English, they tend to write very formulaically, right? And that can mimic how a computer would generate a, a piece of text. So we've had, seen instances in this article that I've linked in the presentation too, where some of our non-native English speakers have been falsely accused of being AI text. So we do, again, have to have our critical thinking skills at the forefront. So what, what's some of the work that we've put in this year to help support Portrait of a Graduate and particularly around the area of artificial intelligence by staff? All of our administration have been given extensive PD on AI and then kind of the expectations around what we expect staff to use with it. And then with that, we've also given staff professional development on AI. So we have dedicated time on our institute days at a number of our buildings. We've had our coaches go to staff, staff meetings at buildings to present on AI. We've had an online campaign to increase education. And then we actually also have a number of cohorts at different buildings who have taken upon themselves to learn about more about the changes of AI and then some ways that it can be used in the classroom. So what's next? We've spent a lot of time wondering how staff is using AI and how it can improve their workload. But we know that, guess who else is probably using AI at the same time? Students, right? So we still have to address what AI looks like in a student's life. Now, the reason why this work isn't as robust right now as the staff side is because first we thought it was just prudent that staff had the foundation so that they could address its use with students. But from a safety, from a, you know, a data privacy standpoint, there's just not a lot of tools that students are able to use right now because of that. A lot of them have age restrictions, things like that. So there isn't a education vetted AI tool that we can formally get behind in a classroom setting. They're coming, they're just not here yet. But that's not to say that students aren't already using AI outside the classroom. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our student ambassadors to speak to these two questions on the screen right here. One is, how is AI currently being used by students? I think it's important that we get their perspective, especially at the high school level. That's really where probably we see the highest use of AI. And then maybe our ambassadors can give us their feedback about what do we do in these next steps? And what education do students need around the ethical use of AI? And with that, I'll turn it over to our ambassador. So whoever would like to lead us.
Hi, my name is Tanai and I'll be going first. Thank you first, Mr. Spencer, for giving a great background on AI usage. And yes, like he said, students have also been dwelling in the use of AI. And I'll try to keep this brief and short, but like Mr. Spencer has said, cheating is a very big issue, probably the biggest issue that teachers have with AI and students. It's most prone in, in classes such as like language arts and Englishes and social sciences. And students have always, not always, but like with the advent of new technology and with AI evolving at a rapid rate, there are instances, of course, of where students have been using AI just to like copy and paste and write essays for them. Regarding STEM, I think STEM is a little harder for AI. And I think the biggest sort of access that students have to AI is ChatGPT, which is probably the most popular and famous one. AI is also being currently used by students for like summarizing like a passage in like a book. I've, I've used AI to summarize like a whole video in a couple like paragraphs. And I think that's a great usage of AI personally because it's not just copying and pasting, it's using AI as a tool, not a replacement. AI has also been used in rereading an essay for you, such as like the same thing that teachers do, how they give feedback back to students among, with their essays. AI is, is it also capable of doing that? Regarding the second question of what education do students need around ethical use of AI? I first think that students need to be open to the idea that AI is very, very interesting, but also very scary. AI is improving at a rapid rate that no one has seen before. And this applies to teachers too. And I feel that teachers should also know the cautions and also the pros of using AI. I believe that helping the student, one way to help the students is teachers being transparent to the use of AI instead of like hiding it and always talking sort of negatively about it. One of my teacher, a lot of my teachers have actually talked briefly about AI and how they have been using it. But I feel like students also need to be transparent in that sense. I just think that knowing the good aspects and also the bad scary aspects of AI will help students immensely. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so tonight hit some of the basics. Before I answer these questions, I'd just like to clarify a few things happening with the technology specifically at the high school level. So first off, ChatGPT is blocked on our school Chromebook. And I was a little confused on that, but tonight with Mr. Spencer's presentation, I understand why, which is we don't know all the dangers yet. So I think especially with Mr. Spencer's team working actively with this, as a student, it does make me feel better to know that they're working on allowing it on the Chromebook. But for now, because we don't know the entire nature of it, I would say that call to have it blocked is a great call. And then on top of that, how is AI currently being used by students? That's a great question. It's not for the most part. You hear a few outlying stories about students deciding to cheat. But what I often find is that it's really hard to cheat, especially on an essay, because when you ask Chat, ChatGPT to write you something right now, it sounds very robotic and kind of boring. And you might be able to get it to write it in a certain way, like, oh, I want to see it at a 12th grade level. But even then, the amount of rewriting and having to reread through what you get is a skill in itself of critical thinking, as well as having to literally revise an assignment to be able to turn it in. I'm not saying that this cheating is great, but you do still have to put in effort. So you can't just turn in one thing from ChatGPT. In addition, I have some of my friends using it to write emails, which is a big help because our society is starved for time, especially when you're a student involved in multiple clubs and events. If Dr. Schuler sends me an email and I want to say, okay, that sounds great, I've got to think of a nice way to put it professionally because it's the superintendent of our school emailing me. And so I've got to be like, good morning, Dr. Schuler. That sounds great. I'll see you on this day. Sincerely, Kayla McGady. And even that takes me two extra minutes of time that I could have been spending on homework. And so to be able to have that is a big deal. And the education students need is ethical use of AI. I think we just need to learn about like, what is this interface? What is this device? When we look at learning nowadays, it's less about content. If you guys remember, I was talking to my dad about this. When Google came out, originally, teachers thought that would be a form of cheating as well. And now we're able to use it to clarify, to search things. It's a huge tool to a lot of students. I think in any realm of education, you're going to face a certain amount of cheating and you do have to account for that and have disciplinary measures. But Mr. Spencer's team right now, the research that they're doing is integral to the improvement of our student population. So the education students need is really what is AI? How do we use it? How can we use it to, for instance, write emails back to someone? To revise a paper for us and use it as a tool? Because that's what it is. It's not necessarily a bad or scary thing. It's a tool if used properly. And especially for our teachers as well, why not encourage it? Because the truth is, the future is AI. There is no avoiding it. So as Mr. Spencer said, we need to get ahead of it because I promise you 10 years from now, education's going to look a lot different. It continuously evolves. And so being an active part of this is incredibly important. And I think you should really listen to what Mr. Spencer is saying here, specifically because he made some excellent points about how we can integrate this into our classrooms and how we can prepare our students and Portrait of the Graduate is fully fulfilled by this tool. Thank you.
And yeah, just, just to wrap this up, finally in the AI space, I think both of our student ambassadors eloquently put it, and thank you again, that AI is never going to replace all of the useful skills of writing and all the useful skills that we hope students get through our Portrait of a Graduate work, right? AI is going to produce something for us initially, but as Kylie was saying, it's that back and forth conversation that you have with AI. That's the real power of AI. You're having that back and forth conversation with a tool. Now, think if you're from the teacher's side of things. You can't possibly divide yourself into that back and forth conversation 24, 30 times with as many students as you have. AI gets to the point now where if we teach students how to do that back and forth, use those critical thinking skills, rewrite, edit, things like that, it's a much more powerful skill to have. It's not just relying on the set it and forget it nature of AI, right? So more to come on that. That work is not going to stop because I think it really is going to keep being a major part of our educational landscape. Now, maybe on the less, least exciting part of the presentation, that's the boxes and wires side. But still very related to, you know, even in the, in the AI spaces, you know, as I talked about why AI isn't open for students, it's because of the data privacy laws and the age restrictions and things like that. Security has become a huge cornerstone for schools. In fact, just yesterday, I read an article that, it was a very high percentage. I want to say it was definitely over eighty percent. But the number of ransomware attacks against K-12 institutions has increased astronomically over the years. And that's because schools are seen as soft targets because they usually do not have as robust of security systems as, as big corporations do. And so they are increasingly becoming targets for ransomware. And so that landscape where in the past we've been maybe a little bit more lax of what we've allowed and what's open for teachers and students actually has to be kind of reined in just from a security standpoint. So the biggest overarching goal, kind of in the boxes and wires side, is how we, how do we develop and maintain robust technology systems? So the first on that list is how we establish and assess the stability and security of our systems. So how have we done this, this year? So we've able to this year fully join our transition center to our district network. In the past, they were on their own kind of local network. And so now they get to come into the fold, so to speak, with the rest of the network, which only increases our ability to keep all data safe and secure now that we don't have to deal with separate networks. We've also done a major overhaul to our phone system. So our phone system now is completely cloud based. There are LTE backups, meaning that if power or internet were to ever go out in the district, phones would still remain functional. One of the things that we're currently doing in that safety and security standpoint is we are evaluating our current firewall solutions. So for those of you, just as a kind of a reminder of what a firewall is, we have a number of systems in the district that prevent bad things from getting in. And one of those is our firewall. That's our first kind of line of defense against anything bad. That's just up for renewal. We want to make sure that we pick a solution that's comprehensive enough that's going to keep our data for staff and students safe. As always, we also conduct annual penetration testing. What has been actually very useful lately is that penetration testing is not cheap, right? Companies know that schools are soft targets, like I said. So this penetration testing is getting more and more expensive. However, on the flip side, as part of our cybersecurity insurance, we have been able to partner with other vendors to provide some safety and security services at either At either uh no cost or at least lower costs uh than otherwise. So that's 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 been a that's been a bit of a help uh for for financing some of these things. We also uh continue to educate our staff on um safety and security with our ongoing phishing campaigns. The latest um phishing campaign that we conducted was right before um winter break. And so we took that opportunity to run that campaign and educate staff on what to click on and what not to click on. And that's an ongoing um uh effort. Because now, again, in this space with AI. AI now, as you saw, my voice was cloned. AI now can clone voices. And there is a new um. Version of, I wouldn't call it phishing, but it's called social engineering, right? Meaning that someone will call or someone will convince you that they're someone who they're not. And then you give up your credentials to them. So in other words, someone calls the help desk and says, hey, I'm a teacher in District 200. I forgot my password. Can you please reset it? We have to make sure that that person who we're talking to is actually a District 200 member and we just didn't. Reset a password for somebody else and now that someone else has uh access to all of uh that staff member's materials. So um cyber criminals are becoming much, much more advanced. And so we uh this ongoing education campaign just continues to um increase as well. Also, um on behest of the the board's uh feedback and the feedback from the community. We have also implemented a guest management system district-wide at each of our uh locations. So if you were to go into the main office of any of our buildings now, there is a tablet. That all guests sign in onto so that we know and have a record of exactly who is in our building. And that all uh external guests are also then um go through a security screening. To make sure that uh everything is kosher and that they're allowed in a school building. Second, we also have a goal of ensuring comprehensive data systems are accessible and usable for staff. So some of the ways that we've done that is really always looking for ways how we're going to increase innovation in our uh student information system. So again, on the security side, this is related. Our uh data in our student information system is now stored in the cloud via our vendor Edgipoint. Which makes this really valuable is that if we were to have an outage or something were to go wrong, Edgipoint now can get to our data. To help us troubleshoot in the moment, right? So that really decreases the amount of downtime should there be an outage. But what also is nice is that it also protects us if, for whatever reason. Ransomware was ever able to get into the network, that data isn't on premises for them to get a hold of. So that's another big um security um consideration that we took into. Really exciting, just with February 1st, online registration is now live for all families with students new to District 200. So from all the feedback that I've heard so far, that process is going um well. Any bumps that we're seeing really is just trying to get used to the workflow and educating our new parents what that looks like. Because it is a change, right? We used to have families go in person to each school. Now they can do um a majority of that registration online. And then starting in spring of this year, we are also going to have all returning students register yearly online as well. This is going to be extremely useful because there are demographic um information that we always want to make sure is accurate. We want to make sure phone numbers are always up to date, addresses, email addresses. Any um uh permissions, photo release, internet, uh acceptable use policy, things like that. We always want to make sure that that data is useful. And so that when we need to draw on that data and use it in other ways, that it's accurate. And then uh thirdly, we also want to evaluate um and make sure that we are being good stewards with the community's uh money. And so how are we um making sure that the tools that we um spend our 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 resources on are the proper ones? So we do have a um a a a big legal requirement in the state of Illinois called SOPA. I've mentioned that before. And that's just to make sure that the tools that staff and or students use is not collecting. Private identifiable information and that if it is, that we have a special legal agreement with that vendor. That permits us to do so. So all District 200 digital tools are monitored for student data and privacy requirements. Learning platform is the central hub that teachers use uh to check if a tool is allowed or disallowed. And if it's not currently on Learn Platform, there is a um a way for our for staff to request. A uh compliance check. And then Learn Platform has a public-facing site, so part of SOPA compliance is to make sure that parents know every single tool. That we put in front of a student um is in compliance with this law. So uh phase two, which we're in the process of right now, is that while a tool may be SOPA compliant. We also need to be sure it can be fully supported with district resources. So that's just to speak to the nature of before a building spends maybe discretionary funds. Through a building budget or even a teacher with their own discretionary funds. That they at least give uh the Department of Innovation and Technology a heads up so that we can have a conversation with them. Because we would hate for resources and dollars to be spent either on a resource that's redundant that we already pay for. Or a resource that's not going to be SOPA compliant. So we've just done a lot of work to make sure that when we are spending money on a tool, that it's done so responsibly. And with that, I can open up uh any questions that the board might have.
All right, board. Remind you to get into your mics for the questions and go from there.
I'll go first. So first of all, thank you so much. This was incredibly helpful, especially the uh portion at the beginning about artificial intelligence. Um and I I really appreciate the perspective we're taking of not just being scared and let's ban it and not use it. But really deep diving deep and understanding it and having a thoughtful and responsible plan of starting with staff and and then uh students. I was wondering if our students are exposed to some of the messages you gave here of some of the risks and considerations of using AI. How are they getting that education in front of them?
Yes, I would say that that's phase two, which we're going to be actively uh involved in. Some of the ideas that we're 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 bantering about right now is that uh Wheaton North in particular. Has a a group of teachers who has been actively involved in uh researching and kind of working with AI. So if I were, I've already approached um Mr. Easter at at North to kind of brainstorm some ideas about how can we take this next step? And put that information in front of students. So we are brainstorming ways in which to do that for the remainder of the year.
And then I have a question on the second half of the presentation. Given that ransomware attacks are increasing with schools. Are there a lot of preventative measures, but is there a plan in place of if that were to happen? Do we know right away what to do?
Yes. So as part of our um ability to get insured um for cybersecurity insurance. We do have a a a ransomware uh what-if plan. So there is a plan that we have internally with the team that should something happen, here are the steps and the people that need to be contacted um to remedy that situation.
And um you make me very happy talking about your cyber insurance policy. I I think as cyber uh insurance claims are so expensive. Those companies are spending so much more resources in offering preventative measures that are included with premiums. So I'm glad that we're reaching out to them and understanding that and I would just encourage. Make sure we understand all that they offer and take advantage of it since we're paying for it anyway.
Go ahead, John. Or Dave, go ahead.
Just two quick questions first. I um also thought the AI presentation was valuable to. Put a little more meat behind, you know, the buzzwords we kind of hear if we're not deep into it. Two simple questions. The security system, is that 100% implemented?
The guest management portion, so.
Yeah, that's one, yeah.
Yeah, it's fully implemented, yes.
Okay. And remind me what SOPA stands for?
Student Online Privacy Protection Act.
Okay, thank you.
If um there's one thing about your work that keeps you up at night, what is it?
On the boxes and wires side, it's definitely ransomware. There's been any number of uh districts locally. Um I think the one that I always think about. You know, Rockford Schools just maybe five years ago had a million-plus-dollar ransomware attack. They did not pay the ransomware and they had all of their data erased. And so um from boxes and wires side, definitely ransomware. And then I I would say on the educational side, AI does, right? Not because I'm scared of it, because like I I get so, you know, excited about it and it changes so much. That I just, I can't wait to see where else is, wha- what's the new thing that it's gonna be able to do today, right? So.
I have understood that there are, and you're listening to an idiot here. I understand that there are uh systems that can evaluate emails to see that they're legitimate before they're released to the recipient within the district.
We um so we have such a system that attempts to uh look at the email and look for. You know, signs of uh malpractice, um not necessarily like if it's generated via AI. But the the ways in which uh cyber criminals are are figuring out a ways around this. We still have to be diligent. So we could buy every system under the sun and try to think that we're very, very uh safe and secure and we are. It's still gonna come down to, you know, the the individual person using their best judgment of whether or not they're gonna click on something that they probably shouldn't click on.
Can't tell if that's working. Um so you talked a lot about the the security aspect of infrastructure. From just a performance and reliability standpoint, is the fact that you didn't talk about that just because with the upgrades over the past few years, it's been a non-issue?
Yeah, I would say that from a uh performance um issue. If the board remembers that there was a large allocation to kind of a comprehensive. Upgrade to some of our core infrastructure, that has been going swimmingly. And a big portion of why our um network runs more smoothly. One, I mean, from the speed standpoint, we all have new access points. But as I mentioned, that our student information system data is kept in the uh cloud now. And then last year, we also moved all of our uh staff information through iVisions into the cloud as well. So when that information doesn't sit on prem, on premises here locally. It just speeds up how quickly we can access that information. So we don't have to maintain servers, you know, boxes in a closet somewhere because somebody else is is doing that for us.
Um and then similarly, thought the uh the approach to the AI portion was was great in the sense that we're, if not openly embracing it, at least we're not running away from it. Um I do think, especially given some of the comments from the student ambassadors, finding ways to weave into the the education. You know, productive uses of the technology would be great. I mean, thinking back to when most of us were in school, you know, there were always tricks to be more efficient. Cliff notes to summarize your texts or or novels. You know, now the fact that you can take a video and summarize that with AI, it it's just working smart. And so teaching people those use cases so that everybody can take advantage of it, I think, is a beneficial thing for us to consider. The other thing that I just wanted to draw attention to and see if maybe it's already entered the discussion. Um I can remember years ago with the Portrait of a Graduate, discussion of the fact that the workplace is evolving so quickly. And we couldn't anticipate what careers might exist for students at the time they graduate. On the flip side, I think it's a very real factor that there are jobs today that will be largely eliminated by AI. Uh I've spent, like you, some of my career in the technology space, increasingly software development can be either done or debugged by AI. And so I'm wondering if we're giving some thought to areas that maybe we de-emphasize from curriculum, recognizing that it may not be as relevant in the future.
Yeah, and I and I could provide uh the board with a a list, um a resource that I like to point out. Every year is the World Economic Forum posts, you know, the top 10 in-demand or growing uh career sectors. Along with the top 10 job skills that students need. And a lot of these skills aren't technical coding skills, but they still continue to be the exact same skills that we've identified in our Portrait of Graduate work. So while content might change and our student ambassadors kind of touched on this. The skills that surround that content isn't going to change. So we're really looking at AI as augmentation rather than replacement. And that how, even though AI can, you know, debug, write programs. A software developer still needs to know the basis of the language, what it spits out is the right thing. That what it spit out isn't going to create some sort of catastrophe, right? So there is just a lot of critical thinking and uh baseline skills that we're focusing on with our students.
And then the the last thing, just a call out, Learn Platform. We might want to look at ways to make that easier for for parents to find. Um I've spent a couple of minutes both using the search tool of our site as well as Google and can't for the life of me find Learn Platform.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions, board?
An AI question, of course, but different one. We oft- we often think about AI as kind of the writing aspects. But the generative AI is pretty exciting. We we use it in my company. I could say, you know, create an image of a pavilion in a park-like setting and have 10 images in about 15 seconds. So it's pretty powerful. So so I have, I guess, two questions to that. It's also pretty risky. There's been some examples of how. Students have created images that shouldn't have been created, so I just wonder, maybe not so much for this conversation, but from a legal standpoint, from a policy standpoint. That's something that we probably need to get ahead of. I'm sure press is all over this, but something I'm thinking about. But also from from a fine arts standpoint, we, there's other opportunities maybe within our classes that might be able to leverage this. Are we having those conversations with arts teachers?
Yes, so in particular, as I was talking about, um our our coaches working with cohorts of teachers. A lot of the teachers that are part of those cohorts are visual arts teachers, right? How can they work um, because not like you, like you mentioned, not only can it create images, but it can also create music. So um uh we've had those discussions with some of our fine arts teachers as well, for sure.
Brad, I think one of the questions, uh the things you just mentioned though, I think press is actually woefully behind in addressing this. I I read somewhere recently that actually even from a state level, I think there've only been one or two states that have issued any kind of statewide guidance. Especially in education toward AI. So that that's an area that actually does need to catch up. I think the only thing that came out from press that we actually chose not to adopt and bring forward. Was a statement that actually would have went contrary to what we've talked about, you know, in in one of their policies on academic honesty. They inserted a statement that basically just said like, in essence, using AI is cheating as a blanket statement. And we're not not comfortable moving to to that direction until I think we, so I think policy needs to come. But it it's behind in in development. There's no doubt.
Go ahead, Angela.
I have one question, but first um comment. I appreciate your use of the word caution, kind of entering into this. I probably lean a little more on the terrified side rather than the excited side. Because I I appreciate work smarter, but there's a lot of value in working harder sometimes. So and I think I'd hate to lose that. I think we live in a generation of of students and a society, society in general, we're so used to like instant. Like we gotta have everything fast instead of really doing deep dives and engaging and enforcing ourselves to work. So I appreciate the caution. But one question. Address the responsible, um let's see, AI education campaign online, what does that refer to?
So uh we did a week-long uh online campaign with staff where um every day was educating them on a different aspect of AI. So it was across seven whole days um of information that we sent to them um to help educate them on AI.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't recall if it was you or one of the student ambassadors that mentioned chat GTP being blocked on uh student devices at the moment. Have we blocked Google's embedded AI? being blocked on student devices at the moment. Have we blocked Google's embedded AI capabilities that they're starting to roll out, or is that active for students?
So, Google's AI is called Gemini. No, no piece of AI is, I'd have to look into that. The Terms of Service right now are 18 and over, and so that's why it's blocked. It's not blocked because we don't want students to cheat. It's just there are terms of service that we haven't met yet. But both Google, OpenAI, which does ChatGPT, and even Microsoft are actively working on education-friendly versions of their AI tools, and we just have to wait till they come out till we can kind of vet those properly.
Board members, anything else? I have a couple of questions then, just to follow up on. I want to thread the needle between Angela and Eric, and the quote you have on one of your pages, I think, is a great way to summarize the AI topic. Critical thinking skills are more important than ever. That's the bottom line, right? And that's the, we could, there's might some things you can accelerate, but critical thinking and doing the work, that's the key. And so, I think it's a great way to summarize for me the AI topic. I want to go back, jump really quick to the fun stuff, boxes and wires.
All right, go for it.
All right. When you, in the audit, in our audit process, do they look at our protocols and controls around admin passwords? Not user passwords, but admin passwords? I don't remember.
Yeah, so, we have to certify with our cybersecurity insurance every year. And so, they have recommendations. So, they're not requirements, but we do follow all recommendations around admin passwords. So, all of the admin passwords are kept in Bitwarden and are randomly generated. So, not one, not one person has access to those passwords, and there's never one password for multiple systems. So, even if you got a hold of one password, it'll be just that system. And then we've also, not necessarily in the passwords, but related to your question, is we've also been very committed to network segmentation, meaning that if a password was gotten, you could only get into a section of the network, not the entire network.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I was asking more about the audit and the controls. Do they test those controls? They look for sample test data to verify that we're doing that?
If, yeah, through our internal penetration tests, they will try to see if they got a hold of a password, how far could they get into all of our other systems. So, that's how they audit, through our internal penetration testing.
Okay. I'll follow up a little bit later on some other questions on that. You talked about the phishing testing we're doing. Can you give me just a feel for the failure rates with the trends in those? Not like now, but like what we've seen, have we seen failure rates go up, down? Anything you've seen that's causation to, you know, being more remote?
I will say that our failure rates tend to span anywhere from eight to 15%. And while that sounds high, I have made it a point to make the phishing tests much harder to spot, right? I think we're in a spot now where our staff is very adept at kind of identifying the run-of-the-mill type, you know, phishing examples. So, the ones that we're pushing out now are just the nature of what cyber criminals are using now. So, I expect those failure rates to be a little higher than they normally would be.
And then is there any follow-on training if someone fails?
So, no formalized training, but we do contact each of those people that do click and provide credentials through the phishing campaign with some follow-up remediation.
So, your point about social engineering or the attacks on, especially with email and in business, at least around financial, about around payables, right, authorizing payments and wires, I would like just to talk more, maybe don't do it right now, but talk more about our controls around that and if the auditors are looking at those controls for approving wires and payments, especially with the sophistication of the attacks.
Yep, and I could definitely work with the business department to have those.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
And then, lastly, you talked about the what-if plan, which I think is, you're calling it the incident, that's the incident response plan, right?
Correct, correct.
And so, when I think about the incident response plan, it gets exercised and tested? Is that true?
Yep. So, in fact, as part of our cybersecurity insurance, and we do have free resources, we have reached out to kind of the lead organization in this space to do some tabletop exercises to make sure that this incident response plan is practiced, right? Because we always fall back to our training. And so, in short order here, we're going to be employing some of that, too.
So, one, and I hadn't thought of it until you used the illustration, but the district where everything was erased and they, because they decided not to pay that ransom.
Correct.
So, as I think about the incident response plan, we've never, as a board, talked about that, our role in that governance. And if that decision has to be made, how does, you know, what's the process? And so, we don't have to do it tonight, but at some point, probably should talk about that as a board.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all.
I'm curious, with that incident response plan, do we have an expectation of what our time to recovery is in the event that we had to activate that?
It all depends on what the nature of the attack is, what systems are down. Again, since most of our critical systems are in the cloud, we, I would never expect like a full-on, we can't, we can't open school the next day, right? Because our email is cloud-based, student information system is cloud-based, all that is web-based. So, it's very helpful and protects us against those kind of attacks.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have no discussion items for tonight. We're going to jump into board committee reports really quick. Board facilities. Mr. Paulson?
Yeah. We met a couple, I don't remember, end of January, and the facility committee reviewed a couple timeline considerations for implementation of the middle school master plans. We had a good discussion. We have a follow-up meeting to that next Thursday where we're going to kind of dig into, review kind of where the plans are, the idea that it's going to come back to the board at the committee of the whole in February. We also talked, I'm sure at that point in time, we'll also talk about some alternative timelines to consider. We also talked about, kind of related to that is the middle school maintenance staff or custodial staff plans. So, that'll be another consideration that comes to the board. So, it was kind of a diverse conversation, but all connected to middle school environments and facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Mr. Long, finance committee?
Yeah, not really a lot to report because the bulk of our session happened before the last committee of the whole, and it was on the five-year forecast, which we got a lot of detailed information at the last meeting. So, I, and then we did, we just touched on very briefly some of the potential funding mechanisms, but we're really premature until we know which direction we're going. So, but at least is on the table, and we know we'll be discussing that in the coming months.
All right, thank you. And finally, human resources, HR policy. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes. So, we continued our review of the administrative procedures. We looked at Section Six, which is the administrative procedures that implement our instruction policies. We also reviewed the ISBE Student Discipline Improvement Plan that we approved earlier on the consent agenda. And then also had some follow-up questions for Dr. Schuler and are going to be digging into that data and other disciplinary data in a future HR policy meeting. And then one thing I wanted to highlight from our meeting is, as, I'm going backwards in our minutes here, but as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, we had some follow-up questions on two policies that were part of the most recent press issue and addressed those at this meeting, which we recently approved those policies. And so, there was a question at the PTA council meeting of some of the work that goes on at the board outside of this meeting. And so, I thought that was a good example where, you know, we had questions, and I think there were seven different members of the SLT there. So, it was appreciated their time just to help us understand those.
Thank you. Any other reports from board members? Mr. Paulson?
Back in January 11th, I made a adopted school visit to Hawthorne, which is a pretty unique school, from my opinion. It was, I think it was the first adopted school visit I made a long time ago. Was back last, back in January, met with Mrs. Zimmer, principal towards the school, and really kind of focused on some of the non-traditional classrooms, learning spaces. I saw students in the sale program, which is, I think, somewhat connected to students with autism. I don't know what the acronym stands for. I saw teachers working with newcomers in independent learning, working on language skills. I saw multilingual students working with teachers in various locations. So, it was pretty cool. I saw kindergartners doing math, trying to draw, explain examples using drawing ducks. That was the unique thing, watching kindergartners draw. They could have used generative AI, maybe. But it was a pretty interesting, diverse visit right after the holidays, and it was good to see different aspects of our schools that we don't often think about when we think, you know, kind of outside of the traditional classroom.
I think I heard you ate a taki, too.
It's very hot.
Yeah.
I didn't know what it was before, but never again.
Any other reports?
Just really briefly, I had the opportunity to attend the Bull for the Torch fundraiser for Special Olympics a couple weeks back at Fox Bowl, and, you know, just a really good event with a lot of, a lot of staff support, a lot of cool gifts, and just a really good event that raised a bunch of money.
Great, that's awesome. Anyone else? As you heard, Julie and I were able to attend the PTA council meeting. First of all, thank you to, thank you to just the PTAs from the row, putting, you know, being here. This is awesome. I thank you. I appreciate you being here tonight. And all the work our PTAs do. And it was a really interesting time for us, Julie and I, to interact with all the PTA leads from the schools, the ones that were there. And one of the topics that came up that board members need to be aware of is adopted schools. And so, the list of adopted schools is going to the PTA presidents, and you might, you should be getting calls from those PTA presidents to connect, you know, and I think that's great. It just increases connection with those groups and the important work they do. Anything else you want to add, Julie? Probably covered it earlier. All right, thank you. So, there's four written reports in the agenda that's online that people can go look at. Our monthly financial report, our Freedom of Information Act report, our board communication log, and the CAC report. So, those are available online for everyone to see and review. Topics for future discussion, we have three topics right now for future discussion. The middle school facilities plan, the food service RFP, and then the transportation provider contract renewal. Are there any additional topics the board wants added or considered for future discussion? All right, our next regular meeting is March 13th at Wheaton-Warneville South. We have a coffee with the board coming up on February 24th, which is a time for the community to engage with the board. We're, public comment doesn't allow that type of engagement as well. Come on out Saturday to the coffee with the board, and we can get caught up and chat and cover the topics you want to cover. The next committee of the whole meeting will be at the School Service Center on February 28th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, note on that, I shared with Dr. Schuler and with Rob that I'm probably going to be gone, out of town for work, but because of the nature of that probable topic, I'm going to try to participate remotely.
Okay.
It is a business trip.
Thank you. All right, we will be moving to closed session tonight. So, Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption, 5ILCS 120/2, Part C, Part 1, and 5ILCS 120/2.c9.
So, motioned.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy. Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutcherson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So, are the meetings adjourned to closed session? We do expect action following closed session in open meeting. Thank you very much tonight. Have a good night.